Nora, are you?
We're ready. Go ahead.
Ready? Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Sorry, my block leg.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the liberty of the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public who have any items that are not on our agenda tonight that they would wish to bring to this board? Hearing and seeing none. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stanzio.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser.
I am here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
Very good. All right. We have some resolutions here for, from the minor subcommittee, was that? Seventeen nineteen Route Ten LLC. The minor site plan for courtyard improvements. Who's here that can vote on that?
Didich, Veely, Dinsmore.
Oh, good. Do I hear a motion approving the resolution?
So moved.
Snapped, Ken.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich, Veely, Dinsmore.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now, we move on to other resolutions. We've got an application number twenty-one colon five fourteen, Metam Corporation. We have a list here of who can vote on that. Do I have a motion approving that?
Some of resolutions.
A second then.
If you could call the roll, please.
Didich.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. And finally.
Mr. Chairman, this one was not prepared for this evening. It could be pulled from the agenda.
Okay.
That one was correct. Seven Enton Road was not prepared.
Okay.
That's good. Or not so good, but if we can pass on that, we'll have that at the next meeting. That leads us to the primary item on tonight's agenda. Application number twenty-one colon five seventeen, Onyx Equities, Two Hilton Court, Block two oh two, Lot three dot one oh. Preliminary and final major site plan and a major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse facility.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The members of the board, Stephen Tomvolakian, from Leader Log of Parsippany, on behalf of the applicant, Two Hilton Court LLC, which is Onyx Equities, the owner. So we're here tonight to present to you the preserve of the site plan, hopefully a brand-new building, a brand-new building in Parsippany, take the place of the existing office building at Two Hilton Court. We're going to take down the existing improvements and move something entirely. You're going to hear quite a bit this evening from all the areas that we have, the owners here, introduce themselves to the town. This is going to be the first appearance of Onyx Equities before the planning board. They've been before the zoning board for some time, I think, but this is the first real application they have in Parsippany. Then after the owner, which is Matt Flath, you're going to hear from the DeBarbieri's, the architects, father and son team that designed that beautiful building. After the DeBarbieri's, you're going to hear from Franz Leky, the engineer, who designed it. Then Joe Steiger, our traffic engineer, is going to talk about traffic impact, circulation, safety, those types of things. Last but not least, we have John McDonough, who I don't know if he's here yet, but he's our planner, just to kind of talk about the planning rationales of replacing the existing office, whether they do or do not. So unless the board has any questions for me, I'd like to start by having Matt Flath, Vice President of Onyx Equities, come in and kind of introduce who he is, who the company is, what their investments in Parsippany, and what they're proposing.
Well, we have a number of checklist items that we usually like to go through first. I'm going to turn to our planner, and he's going to walk through the list that you should have a copy of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a letter we, being new to the board, did not do this review. I have a letter here dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, from BFJ Planning, which did include a completeness review. And I will start, not a lot of items here, I'll start on page one, item twelve. The site is fully developed. There's no wetlands indicated. However, the site does show riparian areas. The consultant requested that there be testimony put on the record regarding the riparian areas. Item number sixteen, the second item in the chart, talks about highlands exemption determination. Their initial review was that the area was exempt from highlands, and they recommended a waiver of this item. Subsequently, they have submitted, BFJ has submitted, an additional report indicating that that determination was in error. The applicant has submitted a full highlands report indicating consistency with, that it's consistent. However, they do have a number of conditions as part of their report, which is December ninth, so the applicant, we believe, should go through those issues. Next, the third item is item twenty-six, proposed use. There is no identified end user. Testimony is requested on what might be typical employment, truck traffic, et cetera, based on the applicant's experience with comparable-sized buildings. An environmental assessment, again, the site is fully developed. There are no environmental features present, so a waiver is recommended. Moving on to the next page, these two are the same. These are essentially comments predicated on separate preliminary and final applications. This is a combined application, so that these will be dealt with as one item, so listed as separate items, a waiver is recommended.
All right, Nora, I hear a motion approving the waivers.
Motion, Matt.
Wait here a second.
Second.
If you could call the roll, please, Nora.
Barbario.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right. So we've gone through the checklist items. If you want to start your case, counsel.
Please raise your hands up. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address, name and professional address for the record, please, and please spell your last.
Matthew Flath, M as in Frank, L-A-T-H. Your professional address?
Yes.
One Gateway Center, Newark, New Jersey, Suite 2400.
Counsel, you can go ahead and.
Can I take it off?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're the chairman. I'm only going to marry. Sorry, Tom.
All right, thank you, Matt. As I said, Onyx Equities is new in town. You've made quite a bit of investment in the town. Why don't you give the board an overview of who Onyx Equities is and just the scope of the investment you've made in Parsippany town?
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Flath. I am Vice President of Asset Management with Onyx Equities. Onyx Equities was founded in two thousand and four by co-founding principals, John Sarasino and John Schultz. We currently own approximately ten million square feet of commercial space within about a two-and-a-half-hour drive of New York City, mostly in New Jersey. Our main headquarters is in Woodbridge, and the office that I sit in is in the Gateway Center in Newark. We specialize in buying well-positioned commercial real estate that, for one reason or another, has either been not properly maintained by previous owners or is in need of some physical improvements. We own all asset classes in the commercial space, office, industrial, retail, multifamily. Most of our portfolio is office, and our industrial portfolio has been growing over the past few years. And as just stated, we did acquire the campus formerly owned by Matt Calley recently. It's about eight buildings, about one point three million square feet, of which about sixty percent is occupied. And our goal with the redevelopment of Two Hilton is to take a, is to help clean up the inventory, right? We have a lot of leasing that we need to do across the office portfolio that we bought in Parsippany. I think there's a lot of high-quality assets within that portfolio, and space will certainly lease as we continue to invest in some of the other office buildings within town, but we've identified Two Hilton as a prime candidate for redevelopment to help lower the supply and therefore increase the, increase the attractiveness of the remaining office buildings in town.
Now, Matt, it's true that you do not have an end user for the future warehouse actually, correct?
We do not.
Okay. But can you kind of give the board an idea about the type of user you're looking at to, that's interested in occupying the space?
Sure. So it's a, it'll be a broad range of industrial tenants, whether light manufacturing, distribution, storage, warehousing, any of the standard industrial uses.
And do you have any, you have brokers, other brokers, as soon as we get, hopefully, an approval from this board, you have brokers lined up to market that space?
We do. We have many broker relationships in the industrial sector, and it's such a hot market right now that you really don't want to take a property out to market until you have it approved. So we haven't actually begun marketing it yet, but if we do receive approval, then we would begin immediately.
Great. And in addition to, like, replacing Two Hilton, do you have plans to invest in the existing four Matt Calley office buildings to kind of bring them back up to top notch and get them hopefully leased up?
We do. So that's what Onyx does. We buy office, industrial, retail, that is in need of some renovations, and the remaining buildings, other than Two Hilton, will all receive substantial capital improvements, whether it's various upgrades from cafeterias to lobbies to elevators. We go in and do a full, full capital improvement plan to make them as attractive and leasable as possible.
I have no further questions for Matt. Again, he's here just really to introduce himself to the town, because this is Onyx Equities' first real project. Again, we have a whole bunch of experts there who can follow Matt, but he's here this evening. He can answer any questions concerning Onyx, their proposals, what their intentions are. So unless the board has any questions for Mr. Flath.
Any members of the board have questions of this testimony at this time? Mr. Matt?
I might have missed this. So this building is intended to have multiple tenants?
Our goal would be to have a single tenant, but we have designed it so if, in the event we are unable to find one single tenant, it could accommodate, I doubt we'd ever go beyond two tenants, just based on the demand for industrial spaces, normally in the fifty thousand square foot range. Beyond that, then it just becomes too difficult to manage.
Okay.
Our preference is one, maybe two.
So it's not going to be a bunch of little starter units?
No. Okay, very, very unlikely.
Okay. Any members of the board, any members?
I just have a question. There was, the application is a warehouse use. You had mentioned something about another use, light manufacturing?
I guess the question is, you mentioned that it's industrial space, but to the extent light manufacturing, it is a permitted use of the zone. Is that something that you'd be interested in pursuing if you can't find a traditional warehouse?
So any industrial use that is permitted in the zone would be our goal. We wouldn't look to, we're not seeking a use that's not permitted in the zone.
And Michael?
I see all these docking stations. How big are the trucks that would be fit here? Tractor trailers or single box unit or what?
Counsel, we have a couple of different engineers that will be addressing that very, about exactly how many trucks, where they're going to park, recharging stations and whatnot.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening, thanks. Is this the same Onyx company that donated for the fireworks in Parsippany last year? Is this the same company?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Is this the same Onyx Equities that donated to the fireworks in Parsippany last year?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Other members of the board? Do you have any? All right, counselor?
Okay, Mr. Flath will be available all evening, if there's any issues. Thank you.
Thank you all for your consideration.
I do have, are there any members of the public who have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Matt. All right. My next witnesses, it's a tag-team operation, so I'll use Jim DeBarbieri and Brian DeBarbieri, architects, who designed this building. I think I have them both sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Names and addresses for the record, please.
James Barbieri, addresses ninety-seven Chestnut Street, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Brian DeBarbieri, ninety-seven Chestnut Street, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Could you please spell your last name?
B-E, capital B, A-R-B-I-E-R-I.
Thank you very much.
Jim and Brian, since you guys both were, this is your design, this is your building, can you give the board a benefit of your qualifications and experience, so hopefully they'll accept you as experts in architecture?
Okay. My name is James Barbieri. I'm a, got my bachelor's architecture degree from University of Notre Dame. I seized my license in New Jersey in nineteen seventy-nine. I have licenses in ten other states, including the surrounding states of New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, Delaware. Member of the American Institute of Architects and New Jersey Society of Architects, and I've appeared before many boards, planning boards, and boards in the justice throughout the state. I appeared before this board, I believe, in twenty fifteen for the expansion to the ShopRite on Route Forty-six.
Brian? My name is Brian DeBarbieri, and I'm a licensed architect and partner in the firm DeBarbieri Architects, located in Hartford. I received a Bachelor of Architecture degree from Virginia Tech in twenty twelve and became licensed in the state of New Jersey in twenty seventeen, and licensed in the state of New York in twenty twenty. Throughout my years working in the field, I've gained significant experience in the design of warehouse buildings such as this throughout the state of New Jersey.
Unless the board has any questions, we'd ask that, will father and son be qualified as experts in architecture, so they can present their designs?
Any questions for the board?
What's going on with Notre Dame's football team?
Next year.
I'm an Notre Dame fan, that's why.
Did you swear?
I did swear, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe Brian will be helping you with the boards, and I'll be able to sit down here.
Jim, again, before you.
You need a microphone over there, please.
Before you reference any of the boards, let's make sure we mark them in. So the first one will be A1.
I also have some handouts, Brian, that these may help. They're duplicates of the boards.
Counsel, are we going to mark each of those separate?
Yeah, maybe we'll mark the handout as A1, and then the boards as A2 and A3.
Okay. So A1, we'll just.
It's just the handout of.
Handout packet.
There should be nothing really new in the, it's really just a summary of what they.
It's already been submitted?
But yeah, I think it's easier to mark.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, which one do you want to call A2, the overhead?
Which one are you going to do first, the aerial or the?
No, we're going to, we're going to do the floor plan first. That will be drawing A1.
And which one of those is A3?
Brian will have to show you, since they're not presently up there, they're behind.
Counsel, these are marked.
Oh, yeah, I think we're going to be marking the other ones.
Yeah, these are A1, A2, and A3 already.
They're already pre-marked?
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we go with that, then?
Okay.
Let's watch you, for the record, identify, in the handout, the board members, identify what's included that's been pre-marked as A1 and A2, and then we'll get.
Okay, A1 is a duplicate. It's the floor plan of the building. This is the same plan that was submitted to the planning board for review. Drawing A2 are the exterior elevations of the building. Again, this is the same plan that was submitted to the planning board for review. It has some color on it, not exactly the color of the building. It's a little off, but that's the only difference. Now, A3 is one that was prepared especially for tonight, because in the engineer's report, they had asked that we talk about the roof plan for the building. And the last rendering is the same as the board that you'll be seeing tonight. Perspective rendering, colorized.
Let's go, counsel, A floor would be, I moved the sheet. A4 would be the.
Why don't you mark, why don't you mark this elevation at two four? Exactly what's in the packet.
Well, we call it colorized exterior, colorized elevation. And then we could call the other one A5, and we'll call that site aerial.
Okay.
What do we call in A5?
Site aerial.
Site aerial, okay.
And Brian, what are we going to mark that last one? Is that similar to the floor plan that A1, that?
Yes, this is, this is a, same plan as the, the plan you have, A1.
So Jim, since we have so many exhibits floating, when you were going to refer to a specific one, please let the board know so they can. Thank you.
So I'm going to just, I want to orient the board to where this building is and where it'll sit on the site, and I'm going to use this site plan here that's colorized.
The A5.
That was actually prepared by the site engineer, but just want to get everybody oriented. So that shows floor plan of the proposed warehouse. North, we're going to call top of the sheet. Of course, then that's west would be left side of sheet, east would be right, and the bottom of the sheet is south. Hilton Court is on the north side, and Brian, can you show where the entrance to this building would be?
Would you please speak into the mic? Thank you.
Here's the entrance.
Yeah, so the entrance would be to the building on that side, and that's where our front elevation will be, that I'll show you later. We have all the parking right in front of the building, along that front entrance. To the, to the west, you'll see a small area where we have loading spaces. And to the south, there's another area where we have loading spaces. Okay, so if we go back and start with our exhibit, A1, it's oriented generally the same direction. The top of the sheet is the front elevation that you'll see as you come into the building. You'll see to the right, we have a gray shaded area. That's where there'll be administrative offices for this building. And the loading areas will be on the west side and south side. So the size of the building has a one hundred and eight thousand square foot footprint. And it's, and of that, there'll be five thousand four hundred square foot of administrative offices. That'll be on two levels. So we'll have a total gross floor area of one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred square feet. The larger loading area has fifteen loading bays. That's the one on the south side, and the west side has seven truck loading bays. Okay, Brian, let's go to drawing A2. Okay, again, in your package, that's the second sheet. This is exactly the same as what was submitted to the planning board, but there's been some color added. The, the top elevation is the front elevation that you'd see off of Hilton Court as you enter the building. And I do want to just say a few things about this warehouse. This, this is not a typical warehouse, like you might think of, you know, an old concrete block warehouse with a couple doors and loading areas. This is, the market is asking for state-of-the-art warehouses, says. That's where the demand is, and I think you've seen some of them going up in the area. They are looking for high-tech facilities. They're looking for a corporate image. They're looking, because these warehouses have to have state-of-the-art product handling and efficiencies and abilities to move product in and out. That's where the market is in New Jersey right now. And of course, that's because of things like Amazon that gets you the packages the next day. They have to move product in and out. So the top elevation, we have the offices over on, I guess that's the east side of property, east side of the elevation, and to present a corporate image, we have two stories of a glass curtain wall, canopy. There's no sign shown on this elevation, but it would be over in that area for this, for this building.
And for the, once a future tenant takes the space, it'll be the responsibility of that tenant to come and obtain its site approval?
Yes, yes. And to break up the length of the building, we added some texture to the building, different finishes, different colors. Again, that's a difference from the old warehouses you're, you're probably familiar with. We're adding a brick pattern texture on the left side with an accent band. You'll also see there's windows there for two stories of administrative offices. We're breaking that up with a darker precast concrete panel with score lines and horizontal accent in the middle. Continuing and with the brick pattern to the right of that with the accent band. Now, it was mentioned that we might subdivide this building, and if we do, that second entrance would be in that brick area. Again, it would be a two-story glass curtain wall at that entrance to present a similar feature as is on the east left side of the building. And the balance of the building, small area, is precast concrete panel in a concrete color, either tan or, or gray, with score lines and a sandblast finish. The elevation below it is the east end of this warehouse. You'll see that the office area wraps around the corner, and the majority of, or the balance of the building is the sandblast precast concrete panels with score lines. You'll see on these elevations that there are high windows. What we're doing there is bringing natural light into this, these warehouses. They do help us with some of the energy efficiencies that I'll be talking about later in that these windows, when it's a nice bright day, they'll be tied into sensors in the warehouse that will be able to shut down some of the lighting and make use of the harvested light from the exterior. The next elevation is the south elevation. That's where you can see the loading areas, I guess, on the east end of that. The finish here will be, again, the precast natural concrete color. You'll see the series of windows across there, the clear-story windows. By clear story, I mean they're high up, they're higher up. Now, these loading docks that are used are, will have automatic levelers and dock seals. So the intent here and what the state of the art is, is that the trucks. So the intent here and what the state of the art is, is that the trucks will back in and load and unload totally undercover. So there will be no exterior handling of product outside the building. That's the most efficient way to do it, and that's what these type of buildings are doing right now. And the last elevation is the west elevation, and you'll see that there's those same loading docks there. And again, it's the precast sandblast concrete panels with, that are scored and accented. I also want to talk about the building construction. This building is totally non-combustible. It's a steel structural frame with concrete precast panels. The bays on this building are 54 by 50-foot column bays, steel bays to minimize obstructions in the building. The height of the building is 42 foot eight. And just for your information, Brian and I just went out there tonight and measured the existing building. And the existing building is actually higher than this building on the south side. The site does grade down. We got, what, about 50 feet on, on the high side and maybe about 40 feet on the side that faces Hilton Court. I'd like to go and talk about the exhibit I put in, in here. And Brian, can you pull that up too? It's probably a little easier to see on the eight and a half that I gave you, but that's a new plan that was not submitted to the board.
This is the roof plan?
This is the roof plan, yeah. There was a question, the engineer wanted to see a roof plan. And I.
What, what, what's the mark this one?
This is A three.
A three. Okay, this, this roof plan shows the extent of the large roof equipment that's on the roof. There will be some smaller plumbing vents and small exhaust fans for toilets and things, but this is the major equipment that's going to be on the roof. On the upper right, there are two AC handling units, HVAC, heat and air conditioning units for the administrative offices. The other three units shown to the left and at the lower portion are space heaters. They're very high-efficient space heaters. There's only three needed. The size of the space heaters are five foot high, 10 feet long, three and a half feet wide. The HVAC units for the office area are, again, about five feet high, eight feet long, six feet wide. And it's basically the equipment that is on here. Now, we have located them at least 50 feet away from the perimeter, and the intent there is that they just won't be visible with the height of this building and their location away from the perimeter. And they not, they aren't the highest equipment in the world at five feet, so we feel we don't need any screening or anything for these rooftop units. The other thing I wanted to mention, it, New Jersey, I guess over the summer, passed a law that all new buildings have to be designed to handle solar panels. And we have to do this with this one, too. And this building is ideal for that. You can see all of the space that's available for solar panel. That's unusual for any other type of building. Other energy efficiencies for this building are the warehouse, we have to do actual calculations to make sure this warehouse complies with the New Jersey Energy Code and also the U.S. Department of Energy. The concrete panels on the exterior, precast concrete panels, they are, have an inner layer of urethane insulation, a very high thermally resistant layer inside. It's not just a solid concrete panel that'll transmit the cold through. We get R ratings of about 20 on this. Now, an R rating is a rating of the resistance. As comparison, a house might have an R 13, so this will have a rating higher than average home with, you know, fiberglass insulation. The roof also has a very high rating of about five inches of urethane insulation. And as I mentioned before, too, the clear story windows also will bring some energy efficiencies with having us the ability to save some lighting, electricity. And the final thing I want to talk about is the fire safety of buildings like this. There's actually a code written specifically for these type of buildings. The fire code requires certain things in a building of this type, and that is truck access around the entire building. You'll see the site plans later that show that we have access completely around the buildings. Something unusual that they require on buildings like this is we have to have fire department access doors around the entire perimeter. So you'll see from some of the elevations that we have a lot of doors. They're not all exit doors. They can be exit doors, but they're mostly to allow the fire department to get into this building in case there's an emergency. Of course, the fire department will have access to this through Knox box, keys, and things like that to get into this building at any time. This type of building also has to have an upgraded fire protection sprinkler system. It's called early suppression fast response. Sometimes they call it FR. Quickly puts a lot of water at any fire event that would happen in this building. And we also need to have a complete automatic fire detection system with fire department panels and an alarm system in this building.
Thank you very much. We'll ask questions for Mr. Philgar. Do you have any?
Members of the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Actually, I have three questions, so let's start one at a time. So first of all, thank you and congratulations for installing EV stations. I think that's a great thing we're doing for the environment. I would highly recommend that we have one EV station for the handicap parking.
Oh, Mr. D, I believe Franz, are you going to be covering EV? Yeah, Mr. Lackey's going to be covering.
Okay, so I'll hold the question. The other one is the, it's a very good roof. So any plans or thoughts around putting solar panels?
It is, it will be structurally designed to take the panels. I don't think a final decision has been made on that. That would be, I guess, when we get to that point, it would be our desire to.
Okay.
But it's an economic decision that'll have to be made, not by me.
Okay. And the, the last question I have is more about, I heard like we may have a two, we have two tenants, right? So if that happens, I'm finding, so how would the office work then, right? I mean, office on one side, so.
Brian, why don't you bring up the office plan again? And if you could show where that second entrance would be and how we would split the loading docks. So each, each tenant, maybe I'll get up for a second. As Brian explained, the, the second entrance for the offices would probably be over here. Yeah, if you recall, there's loading docks at this end. So if we split the building here, here, or here, this tenant would have those loading docks, and this tenant would still have these loading docks.
There would most likely be a demising wall right, right along this column line.
So that's why Mr. Flath said before that, you know, the desire is to have one tenant, but we could split it into two, but not more than two. Not more than two would work in this building.
So, but how would the office space work for the tenant on the other side?
There would be a second office.
Second office on the, okay.
Yeah, there would be a, a second office constructed in this area.
With a, with a, a new curtain wall.
A new glass curtain wall, canopy. And again, there's, it works because if you remember the site plan, the parking extends all the way across the front of the building, so there would be ample, you know, parking for that entrance also.
And I assume it's own roof mechanicals?
Yes, that, that's a good point. I would have to add some roof mechanicals that aren't shown on here. So it would be possibly one or another two of, of the, the smaller HVAC units. That's a good point.
Other members of the board? Mr. Matt?
Sure. I have probably about three questions. First of all, the, you have four doors across the front edge from what I can tell, right? For pedestrians, for people walking into the building? Is that correct? I'm looking at the elevation.
Those.
Department access doors?
Yeah, those are the, yeah, so.
Okay. So, so all people enter through the office? That was my question.
Yes, yeah.
Was there any reason for the number of loading docks that were chosen? Is there any constraint on that? I'm just curious.
It's, I would say it's typical for a building of this size. We've designed several of this size, 100,000, 100,000 square feet. And what do we have here?
Cause you have 22 loading docks, right?
We have 12 and seven. We've had as little as 15, as much as 20, more than 20.
I thought it was 15 and seven, so 22.
Yeah, 15, yeah, we have 15 and seven, so.
Okay. And those are designed to accommodate 53-foot trailers, I take it?
Yes, total length, probably about 65 feet with, and, and the trailer.
Okay. Other sites you designed, I noticed this site, you can't circulate around the entire building, which means that some of the loading docks, trucks have to back in blindside? I'm just curious, the other sites you designed that are similar to this, do they have full circulation?
Again, we'll, we'll get.
I mean, that could be saved for the site engineer?
Yeah, no, but at, at the same time, yeah, it is designed, and we'll talk about radiuses and movement here. So these trucks would come in here, and they would back in and then leave.
Okay.
And our engineer will explain.
Okay.
It's just needed for that. And the same thing here, they come in, back here and leave.
You're right, because that's a back, that's a blindside back in that you showed from the first one, meaning that the truck driver can see great if he's backing on the driver's side. He's backing on the passenger side, as you showed it right there, which means he has a lot of blind spots.
Yeah.
All right. And I guess my last question has to do with the height. So the 42 feet, eight inches, that's to the, the floor height?
From the floor to the roof, yeah.
Maybe this is a question for the site engineer, but do you know what the average grade plane is for when we measure our height against ordinance?
Well, I believe the low, well, at the loading dock area, there'd be another four feet on there. That's at the lower side. So that would be 40, what is that, 46 eight? So up against the building, I think it would be, the average would be the difference between 42 eight and 46 eight. So we'll get further testimony on that.
I'm just, I guess, our ordinance defines the grade plane, I believe. Andrew, is it six feet outside the building?
Yeah, they have a calc.
Okay.
On every engineer.
Okay. I, I guess my question is, I just wanted to make sure there's not a height variance, because 45 is the height limit of the zone, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions at this time? Mr. Polat?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned before, at this state-of-the-art facility, I, I, could you go over that again, what that means? What does it mean to be a state-of-the-art facility?
It's the ability to move product in and out of the building. It's, it's not just the building itself, but it's what's inside with the racking and the ability to rack higher and the computerization of getting the product in and out of the building.
Okay, so now it's like the aesthetic of the building, more or less just.
Yeah, but I, I do want to tie into that, the safety of this building with the enhanced sprinkler systems plus the energy efficiency of the building.
Okay. All those things combined make it state-of-the-art now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the board at this time? Any other questions? Our professionals?
Could you provide some testimony on the site plans? There's no trash enclosures on the site, and it's like that they're located inside the building. Trash and recycle, comment on the interior?
I believe the site, the site engineer, I believe, will handle that.
But it's inside the building.
Do you have trash rooms inside the building, Jim?
Yeah, there will be. You know, facilities like these generate a lot of cardboard, and that's usually baled inside the building, and a truck will back up to one of the docks and take that off. Again, we don't have a tenant right now. We don't know what they're going to generate, but the ones I've been involved with, the big trash is, is cardboard.
And regular domestic trash be handled?
We can keep it in the building. There may be a small dumpster outside. I don't recall, and maybe the site engineer can tell us if there's any space for those facilities outside.
All right, so we'll bring it up.
Hate to, hate to leave that for you, Franz, but.
Would you have to confirm that any compact, a cardboard, compact, would be injured in the building, not outside?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it just gets, you know, in the weather and the rain, it, it has to stay inside before it's moved in and out.
Okay, Mr. Weiser, do you have?
Yes, just one question, sir. You were talking about the smaller units on the roof, and you indicated they were heat units?
Yeah, they were space heaters.
Space heaters. No air conditioning for the warehouse portion?
No. These, these units operate to throw some ventilation and circulating air in there. But no, there is no AC, unless we get a very unusual tenant who wants to spend a ton of money air conditioning that huge warehouse. I'd be surprised. And I've done many warehouses, and not one is, is air conditioned. And recently, I'm talking about through the years.
Jim, how would, in a, on a 100-degree humid day, how would the building operate where the men aren't fainting inside there?
That unit on the roof does also ventilate air, so you do get some ventilation, but keep in mind, too, that these buildings, and I'm not saying that they wouldn't be, not all, so they, they don't have a lot of people operating these facilities. It's not like it's an industrial with tons of people working inside.
And the humidity on a high humid day wouldn't impact the product? Whatever the product is?
Depends on the product, yeah.
Okay.
Again, we don't have a tenant, and, you know, if, if it's tile or things like that, it really wouldn't hurt that.
A lot of tenants opt to put in the, the big fans in the warehouse, too, to help circulate the, the air in there.
Okay, any other members of the board?
I will. Mr. Polat? Can you describe how the offices would look then? Is that bathrooms in there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, typically, there would be, yeah, that, everyone would come into the front. There would be basically administrative offices.
Is there, you're missing in there?
Oh, yeah. No, maybe I didn't make it clear that the two units that are located and handle the office are actually HVAC units, heat, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Any other members of the board? Hearing and sitting none, councilor?
Thank you very much.
Actually, I need to just, any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, now.
Thank you very much. I think Jim and Brian will be here for the remainder of the evening, so if any architectural questions come up there, ready, willing, and aim. Thanks, Jim and Brian. My next witness is our site engineer, Franz Lackey, who I'm pleased to report this company is relocating to Porcepani. They found a space right on Route 46, and so he's Porcepani's newest engineer.
Very good. Welcome to Porcepani.
My proceeding may begin soon for minor social. For us.
Why don't you can take your vest off if you're comfortable, and we're going to swear to an amendment qualifying.
Please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and professional address for the record.
Franz Lackey, L.A.K.I., 12A Maple Avenue, Pine Brook, New Jersey. FBSI.
Okay, now, why don't you give the, for the benefit of your education and professional experience, will you qualify as a professional engineer?
I graduated from NJIT with my bachelor's and master's in civil engineering. I have a professional engineering license in New Jersey, sorry, New York, and Pennsylvania. I have appeared before numerous boards, planning, and zoning. I have appeared before numerous boards, planning, um, and zoning boards across the state.
And you were responsible for designing this site?
Correct.
And pretty much you designed the entire site?
Yes.
Unless the board has any question to ask that Mr. Lacki be considered a-
Any questions on his credentials? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Chairman, all right, Franz, you heard a lot of the board's questions concerning EV chargers, uh, the, um, trash, so, but, just keep those in the back of your head, why don't you go through, uh, your site design, explaining, um, you know, how everything's laid out, stormwater, circulation, whatnot, and then we'll get into the individual questions of the board then.
Okay, perfect, um, I will be referring mostly to, uh, Exhibit A5, the colored site plan, uh, which is same site plan you guys, um, have seen, except for we added the, the landscape into it, and, um, colorized it to give it a little bit more, um, substance to it. So, as, um, as you know, this is, um, within the, uh, office campus, and off of Route Ten, um, we have the Hilton to the northwest, we have, um, nine-campus drive and office building to the east, um, there is currently an existing office building on this site, it ha, it is, um, been vacant for at least the past five years, ever since Onyx has owned it, um, and we are proposing to demolish the building and put in this new, uh, industrial warehouse. Overall, we plan, uh, the proposed layout increases the lock coverage, um, by roughly two and a half percent, uh, the impervious coverage, we are increasing, and that's largely because of the building, although the overall usable square footage is less because it is only one story, um, it is just a larger building, we are reducing the, um, motor vehicle coverage, which is what is producing the majority of your stormwater contaminants, would be a motor vehicle, so we are reducing that, um, that aspect of it, it is a hundred and eight thousand square foot, uh, footprint, with, um, two levels of office, fifty-four hundred square feet, and either, uh, on both levels, one's a mezzanine level, one is, um, on the main level, main floor. There are fifteen loading docks in the rear, um, seventeen loading docks on the, um-
Seven.
Seven, thank you, seven loading docks on the side, some, about nine trailer storages, storage on the other side, um, there are, although these may initially look like loading docks, they are not, uh, designed to be loading docks. The, as stated before, the overall building is, um, slightly less in height than the original, um, building here now, the office building, which has been vacant, um, on-site, there is an existing stream, uh, it's a man-made relocation of a stream, um, back before the entire campus was built out, there used to be a stream that, um, ran through the, the site, and then it discharges, um, across the road, I believe this is, uh, Dryden Way over here, it discharges to wetlands on the other side of the road. And when this site was developed, that stream was relocated, and there's now a series of detention basins, you can see one of them here, um, and there's a series of ponds that scatter throughout the site, and then eventually feed into this man-made stream, which comes through here, it goes into a pipe culvert, and then it exits, and it eventually, um, discharges across the way to the wetlands. All of that drainage facility is existing, it's not part of this application, um, however, because this is a, considered a man-made stream, and it's open, it, it, it has a repairing zone, um, as regulated by NJDEP associated with it, um, and there is a, um, flood hazard area, there's no known wetlands on the site, none visible, we plan on, we are in the process of preparing a New Jersey DEP, um, flood hazard area verification, um, and individual permit to submit to DEP, so the construction of this facility, assuming that it is approved by Parsippany, would be pending, uh, approval also by New Jersey DEP. Our development stays, um, within the, our proposed development stays within the existing development, so we are not extending further into the repairing zone, um, there are two levels of a repairing zone, um, and as long as we are outside of the inner twenty-five feet, we are permitted to leave that pavement in and pull out any, we're going to be pulling out any existing pavement, or any existing, um, disturbances within twenty-five feet of the top of that, which is your repairing zone. We are proposing, uh, a series of porous asphalt, um, in, uh, a fire lane that is at the rear of the building, as well as in the parking areas. This, um, porous asphalt helps control the water, detain the water, slow it down, so it doesn't impact any neighbors, as well as it cleans the water, um, it, this is, um, part of New Jersey's, and really across the country, green infrastructure, um, push, this is something that's sustainable, and it's good for the environment, rather than having, um, traditional, um, manufactured treatment devices that have filters that need to be replaced, and then disposed of, so this facility is all treated and detained as a green infrastructure facility. We are, um, proposing three, um, electric vehicle stations, I understand that over, um, the past few months, the, the governor has passed a, um, electric vehicle push, um, a mandate to install electric, electric vehicle-ready stations, um, in all new development, this site, um, we will actually be adding an additional electric vehicle station to this, because this site underneath those rules requires four instead of the three that we are providing. Also, typically, they're in tandem, so you'd have one station, one charging station for every two spaces, so it just makes sense, adding another one anyways.
Franz, can I ask you, that, assuming that there's more demand for electric vehicles, will the infrastructure be there to allow an expansion of those EV-ready spaces in the future?
Yes, we can, um, it can be designed such that we can pull additional conduit and add more stations along the parking lot as needed, uh. We have, we have four ADA compliant spaces, um, right outside the office, the office part of the building, um, it was noted by one of the board members, that it would be good to have an EV-ready station within the ADA spaces, um, we will look into that and try to accommodate that in one way or another, um, with, between the charging station, and it being ADA compliant, we may put in a, there's, there's potential for us to put an additional ADA space across the drive aisle, or something along that nature, and so we don't have the charging stations right in front of the main entrance of the building. We have proposed a decent amount of landscaping around the building for a warehouse, um, there's actually, should be some in this island here, as well, we plan on leaving as much of the existing landscaping as we can, um, we don't want to disturb and cut down trees that, um, might be able to be saved, this entire swath, including, um, some of the green in here, uh, will all stay existing trees, um, we're kind of hiding some of the green, because there's actually pavement here that we're eliminating and pulling out, uh, we're putting in grass there. There are multiple fire access doors spaced every hundred to hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, surrounding the building, there is fire access off of, uh, Hilton Court, and get all the way around the building, around a fire access road, twenty-six feet wide, around the back of the building, and then they can continue and get, and loop around the building back to, uh, Hilton Court. We also are planning on maintaining existing access to the Hilton and Nine-Campus Drive, both of which will be, um, chained off with, uh, a bobbler and chain, to prevent, um, regular vehi, vehicular traffic, but it will be open for, um, emergency vehicles as needed to access throughout the entire campus. The, we are proposing a lighting, it's a mixture of wall pack units, building mounted units around the entire perimeter of the building, as well as, uh, pole-mounted lights around, um, in the, in the traffic islands, and around the perimeter of the site in general, those will, um, those will not impede any, any light, if we know light spillage onto the neighboring properties, and none shining onto Route Ten, or any of the adjacent roadways. This site is actually set down lower than, uh, Route Ten, so as you're driving by, you can, you see the building, but it's, um, it, it doesn't look like it's forty feet tall, it looks significantly smaller than that.
Franz, can you put out where the trash dumpsters are?
So, on most of, most warehouses, the trash winds up being taken care of, um, internal, as well as within, um, there generally be some kind of trash compactor, recycling, and, um, regular waste within one of the loading bays, it's really tenant-specific, and if the tenant does require a, um, a trash enclosure, that would be, we would need to come back to the board, or, um, whatever regulations Parsippany imposes, in order for that tenant to have their trash, uh, enclosure specifically outside, be screened, um, all up to the Parsippany ordinances.
So, as proposed, all trash, all recyclers inside?
Is, will be inside or within a, a loading dock container, um, nothing, there's no dedicated trash storage, or dumpster enclosure, on-site right now.
Franz, one question after is, when you were laying the building out, when you were designing this a year ago, uh, talk about how you designed it so that the trucks, and I know Joe Stiggers here, and he can talk more about circulation and saving, whether, you've designed how the trucks, how you laid the site out, so that the trucks, the large warehouse, delivery trucks, for lack of a better word, can access the site and pull into the loading bays?
Okay, so, the trucks will access off of Two Hilton Court, they can come around the building, and they can back into any one of these bays, as well as come in, um, and back into these bays as well, um, Mr. Mep had indicated that backing in, um, will provide a blindsided, uh, reverse movement, which is, is something that, that will happen with this facility, but it's not uncommon across industrial facilities, there should be little to no pedestrian, um, activity in, in the area, in the loading docks, um, as it is, so it's, it's a more difficult maneuver for tractor-trailers, but it's not something that they're not, uh, typically used to. The site is designed predominantly for WV sixty-seven trucks, which is the fifty-three-foot trailers, um, and they will, in the end, it's, it's also tenant-specific, and, uh, WV sixty-sevens is the biggest truck that you're going to have, um, there are some that might have smaller, more box trucks, or, um, uh, forty-foot trailers, thirty-five-foot trailers as well, instead of the larger trucks. There was a comment in a few of the, the letters that we have received about generators, right now, there are no generators planned for the site, again, if the tenant needs one, they'll come back, they'll request it, they'll get our approvals for it, um, in terms of signage, also, we plan on using the existing, um, monument sign, which is in this location, right off of Two Hilton Court, there's a most flowerbed area, uh, with an existing building signage, no plans to improve it, enlarge it, um, just to replace it with a tenant sign, um, a sign that made sure it's designated as Two Hilton Court, so everyone knows where that, um, any building-mounted signage, again, we'll have, the tenant will come back to, uh, Parsippany for the, for approvals.
Now, Franz, you, uh, had the occasion to accompany the Highlands, uh, personnel as they inspected the property a few months back, correct?
Yes.
Would you have a chance to review the Highlands' basis to review letter that was condition, that conditionally approved this project?
Yeah, so, in, in general, the Highlands, um, are, were in favor of this project, they found that it was consistent with their master plan, um, I walked the site, along with a member of, uh, Onyx with, um, the Highlands, they had no issues with the proposed development, um, they liked what we were doing with the, um, stormwater, and the additional types of landscaping that we're putting in there, they had requested that the green ash, which is proposed on-site, um, be replaced with a, uh, more native species, and one that's not, uh, subject to, um, disease. So, we, they had, they have also provided with their native plant species, so, um, we can select one that is appropriate for Morris County, and the consistency as a whole.
So, Franz, have you had the opportunity to review Mr. Congiano's, um, review report?
I have.
Okay, um, do you take any issues or exception, anything, any recommendations that Andrew put in this report?
Uh, no, I do not, um- My company had reached out to, um, Mr. Congiano, and spoke about the project earlier today, and we have no issues with applying and working to-
Similarly, have you had a chance to review the water, sewer, fire department, forester reports, and do you take any issues with any of those comments, or any of the necessary review report?
I, I do not take issue with any of those reports, and we will apply with them, one comment, I do have on the water reports, are, um, the, the report that we have, that we got from the water department stating that this, basically this building cannot be brought online, uh, because the Parsippany's fair share, uh, housing has, that we are not permitted, there, no, new, new facility is permitted to produce more than fifteen, I believe it's fifteen hundred gallons per day, more than the existing use, um, that letter continues to state that the existing office building produces, uh, this, that this proposed use will produce significantly more than that fifteen hundred gallons per day, um, however, the office space over the past five years, which the water department has been, um, looking back at the records, has next to melted low, because it's been vacant, um, as designed, our calculation showed that the office building, which has roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand usable square feet in it, if it was fully occupied, it would have approximately eighteen thousand gallons per day, um, domestic water demand. Under our calculations for this proposed warehouse, including the ten thousand, uh, plus two thousand square feet of office, and all the warehouse space, we're only looking about four thousand gallons per day, so we're actually fourteen thousand gallons per day less than the fully built-out office, uh, so, that will be, that may be taken into account, and we're actually reducing, um, the water flow than if Onyx just came into here and said, hey, we've got a tenant for the entire building, this is better for your demand.
But you do recognize that-
I do recognize-
Parsippany Water Department and the board order, and that's, it is what it is?
Yes, yes.
I go for the questions, Mr. Lacki.
Members of the board, have any questions on this witness at this time?
Chairman?
Mr. Dadee?
Yeah, so, first of all, thank you again for considering EV station for handicap parking, um, my only comment would be, um, if you plan to have another handicap parking on the other side, um, it may be more complex, or, you know- it may be more complex or, you know, you may have enough ramps and enough space and you have a van accessible and all that, right? It just become more cumbersome, I would think. I mean, I leave it designed to you. So, if you do on the this side of the building where the entrance is, it may be just easier. If you do on, for example, one option could be, if you do on the leftmost handicap parking, then it could be common, one station common between the regular one and that one. Again, I leave it to you, but I get just a thought, yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep. Also, one more thing, how much is the space between the leftmost dock, docking station on this side and, yeah?
This one down here?
Yeah, because just visually, right? I don't know how much space is there visually. I don't see if a truck will be able to go and back, back to the left most docking station.
So, this right here is, it's about 30 to 35 feet, this hammerhead in here. The, this is for the larger trucks. It is a difficult maneuver. I've seen them do pretty crazy things with trucks, but it is, it is, the ideal spots are probably about two to three in from the, from the end. These last ones may be turned into a ramp, which are easier to pull into. That could be where the...
Trash compactor.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. It has been a very long day. The trash compactor would be, or if the tenant is using smaller trucks, that's where they'd be pulling into, that's what they'd be backing into using all the spaces, and it's really up to the demand. The, our typical warehouse, and I know this had to come up before, we typically try to fit at least one loading dock for 5,000 square feet of building. If this was in a big rectangular site with no stream here, we had, we had the space, we would have loading docks all the way across the back and not have anything on the side. This side entrance and the limited over here, and the fact that we don't have a full loop road around, it's leading around the environmental constraints out here and trying to minimize the impacts.
Okay. Other members of the board with questions? Mr. Meth?
I will, I'm just gonna see if anybody else wanted to go first. You just mentioned the loop road. I guess my big question is, so, how is not feasible to make that a complete loop road so that you don't have to have blindside backing and maybe take out a couple of the loading docks just to allow a truck to be able to turn around there? I'm just curious.
Getting around this back can be tight for trucks, especially the banks on the, along the manmade stream here, it'll be a little steep. We can, that's something that we can look into as potentially converting this into a complete loop road. We had designed it to keep the trucks, these truck, these two truck courts separate as much as we can and just limit it to fire department access. But overall, we felt that it was better to, to keep this as just a fire department emergency access for now.
Okay, I mean, in some respects, it's your site, and I respect what you said about not an area where you expect pedestrians. I do find that that's where pedestrians are most at risk when they are there, and the truck drivers actually sometimes become pedestrians. So, there are people that could be walking in the area. That's, that's, that's the main reason why I ask about the blindside backing. I guess, and Mr. Canciano had a comment about truck turning templates. I'm really curious about that one island that's close to the interconnect with an adjoining property, but it looks...
This one here?
Yeah, I mean, that island looks like it potentially compromises maneuvering in and out of the, where you want trailer parking. Have you checked templates around that? I mean, does it have to be as big as it is?
This island, this, I mean, this island can be, can be cut back more, and we can, and still abide by all of the coverage requirements that we have, and this can be cut back. We were trying to, at the time of design, designing this, trying to reduce the impervious coverage. We're actually at one point trying to get below the threshold to, for the Highlands, however, that just wasn't feasible for this site. The trucks, it does, they do fit in here. We have run turning templates through this area. It gets to be a little tight if they're, they're pulling out of here and coming this way, but coming the main route, we had, that was sufficient.
I see that. I was really more concerned about the accessing of the...
These ones?
Right. And I guess the interconnect between the properties is remaining?
Yes.
Okay.
Here and here. But we were putting on, here, the plans are showing for bollards and a chain on it. Based on some municipal comments and internal discussions, we had decided to do the same thing over here and leave it as emergency access.
Okay. I guess my last question is, would you be amenable to putting a sidewalk between the building and the street? I mean, the main reason is, you're introducing trucks on the property, and trucks have a lot of blind spots, and I worked in this, in Seven Campus Drive for about eight years, and I was so, I was shocked at how many people walk around this area. There's actually people that take the bus and walk in frequently and around the area on Campus Drive, and you're right next to a hotel. I could easily see people wanting to go there for happy hour, you know, afterwards. Would you be amenable to putting a sidewalk from the building to the street?
Okay, so, we'd bring a sidewalk basically right around here and connect it to either side, but I don't, I don't see why not.
Okay. And lastly, just curious, four, it's four ADA spots?
Yes.
I mean, it seems a little low for when you're over 100 parking spaces. Is that correct?
I'll have to double check to confirm, but...
I thought it was like, one for every 25 up to 100, and then every 50 after that, but I, I'll leave that to the professionals.
Yeah, we'll have to double check. Yeah, I think it is one for, you may be one short, but we'll have to...
If, if we are one short, we will add additional ADA space.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other members?
I mean, I do second that Matt's comment about having a loop road. I think the, that space that, the docking station I was talking about, the last one, it's very tight. If a truck is trying to back up, back, you know, and it gets stuck there, emergency vehicles will, will also not be able to go through there, right? So, I mean, the whole idea of that road will be lost there. So, I do second that thought, the comment, Matt's Matt, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did you have?
Yeah, I have one question. With regards to, you said that you don't have a generator on the premises. Just to make you aware, I was mayor for eight years prior to being mayor again, and we had many power adages, and just forewarning you, we're tree city number one. We do have a lot of trees, and we do lose power at times due to these storms, and this is a recommendation, I think would be beneficial for you to have a generator on the site so we can use it for a storm stage. No, I'm only getting to that. Well, I'm just, you know, when you said that, it just sparked me, because I know when I was, you know, mayor prior, and then just recently, I saw some facilities that didn't have it, and it was, they were out for like a week too, you know, and then it becomes an issue. So, that's up to you if you want to do that, but just give me a forewarning.
Thank you. I know we all have recent memories, especially Sandy and some of the other times, and I was actually living in Parsippany. I grew up in Parsippany when you were first elected as well. So, I grew up, I went to Parsippany Hills.
So did I. Good, good schools, isn't it?
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few, just if you can add a little more testimony. We had asked about the limits of the heavy duty pavement. Where is the heavy duty pavement going to be?
The heavy duty pavement will, actually, it's gonna be everywhere except for within this parking area. We're gonna have the forest pavement and the fire access, because that's forest as well, and this is just being a standard...
I just wanted to get that, that I'll be updated.
Yep.
The turning templates, they're very important, emergency access, especially around, coming around the access road behind there, making sure we, so we're gonna have to, I was hoping you would have those today, but we'll have to, you will submit them, and we'll have to make sure that they...
The answer is yes. I don't crap it.
Okay, moving along. Mr. Weiser, you had some...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the BFJ September 16th, 2021 report on page two, the item down at the very bottom, and then it goes on to the next page, talks about the front yard setback, and there seems to be some discrepancy as to whether a variance for the front yard setback is required. Can you address that?
Uh, yes. I'm going to pull up.
Wow. It's okay.
All right. I'm just gonna do it this way. So...
Just let the board know what you're looking at?
This is the site plan. It's what was submitted, nothing's changed, just an enlargement of it. So, what we have is, I believe the planning memo was calling out a front yard setback that was dimensioned as 100.39. That dimension is actually the side yard, which is this one here. So, the front yard would be along, we're considering it along Hilton Court, and the distance, the closest distance from the building to Hilton Court, which is this cul-de-sac here, is 175 feet.
Okay, so, there, the, the planning memo is really referencing a side yard as opposed to the front yard?
In our interpretation, yes.
And can you point to where that side yard?
So, we're...
That, where the 100.39 is?
So, the 100.39 is this dimension here, which is from the building corner to this, this lot line, this lot line abuts the Hilton, I don't remember the address, and then, so the front, the front lot line that we are taking is along the front yard here, right along Two Hilton Court, and then as it hits the Hilton property, sharing the adjacent property lines, our side yard.
So, that's a separate lot. Is that roadway, property line, an internal roadway or is it a dedicated roadway, dedicated right of way?
This in here?
Yes.
This is a dedicated right of way.
And does it, I, I...
Here is not.
I apologize, I'm seeing this for the first time, so, does it, does it extend all the way to where that...
It, it ends at the cul-de-sac, it actually continues.
Okay, so, while it would be the front of the building, it's not abutting a right of way, it's not a roadway frontage?
Correct.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, if you wanted to be very, very conservative, you could, you could require a variance for that. I'm not sure, given the nature of this, what was just described, whether it's really necessary. I would defer to you as the engineer, your planner and council as to whether that, they feel it's necessary.
You're talking about the frontage on a public right of way? Is that what you're talking about, or more of a setback?
Well, they're calling it a set, a front yard setback. The question then becomes whether it's really a front yard because it's not abutting a right of way. It may be the functional front of the building or the architectural front of the building, but it's not abutting a right of way because the right of way doesn't go through?
You're not considering the Two Hilton Court cul-de-sac as a right of way?
Well, but that's not where the encroachment is. The encroachment is further to the, I guess, south.
I don't think she visited the site. The zoning, I mean, as the zoning officer, I would review it as correct, as the 175. I don't think she visited the site. If she had, she would have seen that it's not, it doesn't have any frontage there, so as, we wouldn't have reviewed that as, I would have said that that was the side too. I would have done the 175. My guess is that she probably didn't get a chance to visit the site.
Okay, so, that answers that question. The other question, and I don't know, or the other questions there, when you look at on the planning report, pardon me, on page two, items two, three, and four, they seem to call out some discrepancies between the various documents that you have submitted. I think that you have addressed most of them verbally, to the extent you haven't, if you could, in terms of what is the, what is the proper description against what they, the previous planner had put in their report? And then I would just ask you to make a condition of approval that the documents be brought into conformance with one another.
Perfectly acceptable.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a couple more questions to follow up on our earlier questions. One on the building height, the other on the, on the trash, and there was something that came up on the architectural elevations that I think that I did not bring up in my letter. So, starting with the trash, there's ample space to provide a location, a standard location for since, because we don't want to get into condition of having to come back to the board to add a trash receptacle on site. So, I think you should add a trash receptacle location, the concrete pad and screening, and ample size enough for, for the trash refuge from the office and the warehouse personnel, as well as recycling bottles, cans for the personnel to go well.
I have no issue with that.
Okay. And then, the building height, could you provide testimony on that? I'm sure you've measured it, injected it. Could you provide your testimony on what the building height is, how it was measured, and is it as proposed in compliance or will it need to vary?
So, we had calculated the building height, the average grade, six feet around the building, and it is, pardon me.
Let Mr. Canciano know which sheet number on your plans it is so you can do it?
So, it is on G1. What we're providing, we don't have the building height exactly labeled on here, but the average grade we had calculated out to be is 293.667, 293.7. So, that's on G1. We have a table and a figure where all that is calculated from.
Can you talk about the building height in relation to the average grade plan and whether it's consistent with the zoning requirement?
So, the building height, overall height is, it was calculated, it's under 45 feet height, which is the maximum building height in, in here. Can you tell me if I have my eleven pocket? So, all right, the architectural plans that what you guys have in front of you, I'm looking at A2. The west wall, actually, every one of these plans, I believe, has it. There is an average grade typical, I'm looking specifically at elevation four, the west wall, there is a dimension of 45 feet, about a third of the way from the left-hand side here, and that is based off the average grade, which they are also providing an average grade calculation where those numbers are coming from, which matches the average grade calculation we have on our sheet. So, per the architectural plans and this A2 exterior elevations, the average height of the building is 45 feet, which is in conformance with the ordinance of maximum height of 45 feet.
That, that calculation's to the building corners, right? Those are the four corners of the building?
The calculation is six feet off of the building.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, because on the architectural, it seemed to be described almost as if they're the corners of the building.
So, the architectural seems, seems like that. However, I have a calculation on my grading plan. which breaks down each wall at six feet off. It is, we have a little diagram for where each wall's come from and it does break it down. And I got 293.67, the same as what the architect is showing on his question.
And you made every effort to maintain consistency with the parson's desire requirement?
Correct.
In compliance is what you're saying, it does not need a variance?
Correct.
I just wanted to get that on the record. The height, trash. There was a, a plan, TC1, talked about temporary construction. Is there, is there any kind of planned operational phasing? What is the purpose of this, that plan? Are you, is this building going to be built and phased and occupied in phases?
There is, there is not. The TC1 plan was mainly put into place, it is one of the checklist items, as a site plan checklist, to have a, a temporary construction staging plan. I had note, I noticed in, in your letter, you'd wanted to move some of the areas outside of the fourth pavement, which we will.
Just want the clarification that this, we're, we're intending on having a phased operation and where we're, it opens up a whole nother question of, line of questioning on with the amount of parking and.
No, not for this size of a building.
And then, the trail, the nine trailer storage spaces to the north or, or just to the west, where we're holding. They back up, you had some concern about impervious coverage. They back right up, the pavement goes right up to the face of the wall of the building without any backup protection. I'm concerned that building will get dinged and nicked. Is there any reason why the pavement goes straight up to there and you don't have some kind of buffer or protection?
That was mainly just to maximize the space on that side of the building and provide adequate space for the trucks to back into it. I don't, by the time we pull, we start pulling far enough away from the building where that risk is mitigated, because the trailers do have different depths and where the rear axles are. Sometimes they're right at the back bumper, sometimes they're 10 feet in. So you got a truck backing up and then into, until they hit, hit the wheels, hit the curb, you may already be too late. So we did not take, take that into account in providing that space.
So there's no protection from the truck backs up a couple feet too much into the building?
Not at this time.
And then the last question I had, this is more for, should this board deem this application approved? There's discussion about bifurcating the building, it's separate tenants. Parking count is based on employees and number of managers and number of staff. I think this should just be a condition added. Should it be broken into multiple tenants, that would have to be the parking count would need to be addressed or in compliance.
So the, the parking count that we have established here, there's also a note in one of BFJ's letter, one that you were referring to earlier about parking counts and not counting the office. So based on the way the ordinance has broken down four warehouses, it needs to include, I have the exact language here, but it needs to include one space per man, one visitor space per 10 employee managers. It's one space for every two employees and, and such. It's a pretty complex parking calculation. So typically what we see for one of these warehouses is 1,000 square feet per, one parking space per, per 1,000 square feet warehouse is more than sufficient. And so no matter how we devise this, there can, you're, you're going to wind up with approximately that same number of employees. If for some reason that becomes not enough for the tenants, they will have to provide some other means of parking, whether it's on one of the adjacent parcels that Onex owns with some Ben shuttle buses or something along that nature. We will make sure that the parking complies with the ordinance. When it comes to, back to the actual planning letter, take it into account office. Really, all the numbers that we had come up with takes into account the office employees. We can recalculate it and show the office employees with, separated from our parking summary. And we will still be in conformance. We have 127 spaces, which is just about the right amount for this size of warehouse in our opinion.
As long as it complies with what they come into, it's known, that's the bottom line.
All right, any other members of the board, any of our professionals?
Mr. De Palatano? Thank you. What's the timeframe of demolition to building completion?
For full construction on this?
Yeah.
I would estimate probably nine months to a year.
All right. When does the demolition take place? What time of day?
It'll be likely 7:30 to 3:30 is a typical construction day. I, it depends on any ordinances that there might be within parsonny regard, regarding noise and not such a thing in terms of what kind of operations there are. I'm not part of the contractor, so I don't know the exact answer to your question.
Typically, this size warehouses, how many employees?
Really tenant-driven. I figure on roughly one per 1,000 square feet, which is usually our parking calculation as well.
Okay. And when the project is complete, will there be more or less trees than there are there now?
I believe that there will be fewer trees than there are now.
All right, so will that affect any stormwater runoff onto the Drive and Way or Route 10 or Seasons Restaurant, anything over there? Anything that'd be affected by, that would be less trees?
No, everything drains into our site. We have, the entire site does not drain into ours. However, we have reduced the amount of runoff going out to the site and actually, for the most part, all the storm water runs through our site because the, it daylight, it pipes out across Drive and Way. So all the other campuses eventually run through this site.
Okay.
To exit.
Is that a stone word upon there in that photo, top right?
This is. Excuse me, can I put this in as A6? This is an exhibit emergency access that I had put together.
Mark this as A6.
It's at top right.
I just marked it.
All right, great.
This is an emergency access template?
Yeah.
And it's all three sheets depicting the template? Or all three photos depicting?
Yes, yeah.
So that stream you talked about before, does that come off of that?
So there's a detention base in here, you can kind of see a channel. So it, there's a out-of-control structure, it channels, goes underneath the culvert, underneath the road, and discharges the head wall. That head wall is right here. That's, that part is this.
All right.
So, and this, this handle storm water from.
The other side.
Mostly Hilton. I can't tell you exactly where. This, this site, just so Mr. Kenjiano had alluded to it, we had put together emergency access showing aerial fire truck coming in, rounding the site, going back out, same thing with coming into the site via both emergency access driveways. It shows that it can circulate the site without any impediments.
Mr. Weiser, you had a.
Yeah, just to clarify one thing. So is it correct to say that Onex owns the entire campus?
I don't believe so.
How much of the campus?
Can I ask Mr. Flap to come back? They own a lot of it.
Okay, that's, that's, is there a graphic that you could show what is owned and what is it?
I.
We own eight buildings within the campus. I don't know the exact number of total buildings within the campus, but it's more than eight. We don't own any of the adjacent buildings to this property though. So none of the other buildings that we own are directly adjacent to this.
Okay, so it's fair to say though that there is enough real estate that you have control over that if additional parking needs to be off-site, you would be able to make some kind of arrangement that the parking would be satisfied and then there would be some kind of way to get the individuals to the building?
That is possible, but in my experience in industrial leasing, with the amount of parking we provided here, that's highly, highly unlikely.
The answer is yes.
The answer, it, it would be possible, but I don't think we would, we don't.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions by members of the board or our professionals?
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman. You testified earlier that really there's, there's no signage plan at this point, except for the monument sign at the entrance.
Correct.
You will be submitting a sign plan for the building mounted sign?
I think once the tenant is leased up, it'll be the tenant's responsibility to come in and ask this board. If they want a conforming sign, great, but I believe they're going to have to come before this board for a sign.
Okay, so you're going to leave it to the tenant?
Yeah.
Are there any wayfinding signs proposed, especially since you have some emergency access only points and some potential for splitting of the building for two separate tenants?
Uh, not at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe as a condition that a wayfinding sign plan be submitted, I think is appropriate for the, for the way the site is proposed.
Yeah, the board will have to work with Mr. Kenjiano to come up with a, with a wayfinding.
Yeah, it's a, it's different than the building mounted sign, which is tenant-specific. This is more site-specifics, especially given the emergency access.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All right, are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor?
Thank you, Frank. My next witness is Joseph Stiger, traffic engineer who's appeared before this board and assists the zoning board many, many, many times. So swear your name, Jim.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So if you got.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please, by your last.
Joseph Stiger, S.T.A.I.G.A.R., 17 Treelot Drive, East Hanover, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Joe, have you previously been sworn in, qualified before this board?
Yes, I'd say the board would just more times, but I have been before this board. Mr. Benzmore particularly looks very familiar.
So I want you to go over the board, brief overview of your education and credentials so they can qualify you as an expert?
Sure. Bachelor's science, master's science degree, civil engineering, New Jersey Institute of Technology. Been a, now a professor of traffic engineering courses at NJIT. I have a professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states in Northeast, and a professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey. But I, I'll be testifying tonight as a traffic engineer at the board, so accepts me.
And have you or your firm accidentally studied the former Macallad Business Campus for pretty much all the projects they've done?
Pretty much of all of them, yes.
So you've studied this, this part of parsonny, pretty much out the ways of?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. We would ask that, Mr. Stiger.
Any questions on this witness?
Did you complete your ethics hours? I'm sorry.
Doing the official term, was he?
Fine.
Thank you very much. Now, Joe, your, your firm prepared a traffic study. Now, I understand this is a permitted use, but given tradition in parsonny, we always come in with a, with a traffic impact study. Can you give the board an overview of, of your firm's findings? And then as well, answer some of the specific questions from Mr. Dr. Kenjiano concerning the safety of the truck movement?
Yes. Prepared a traffic impact study, basically three parts to it. Evaluation of existing conditions, where we go out and take traffic counts and determine what the existing conditions are in the area. Traffic control devices, take an inventory of what controls traffic in the area. Secondarily, we project how much traffic a development such as this would generate using standard trip generation rates. And then thirdly, and then assessing the impacts. And then thoroughly, thirdly, working hand-in-hand with the site engineer and make sure that we have a site that operates safely, efficiently, sufficient parking and so forth. So we, we're in COVID, but as, as Mr. Kamalakim had pointed out, we have some experience in this area. So we do have some traffic counts that date to 2018, but we felt that that data was, was better than using current data and trying to find a COVID adjustment. So we took that 2018 counts and then we bumped it up 1% per year to take into account a growth rate. NJDOT has established growth rates for traffic volumes and from historic data. So we, we essence, we, we adjusted it to current volume conditions. And then additionally, we took an inventory of surrounding projects that have been approved by the township. And, and then, but haven't been built yet, assuming that they will be built someday and generating traffic. So we incorporated that traffic. So we have existing conditions, we bumped it up on a, by the growth rates. And then we have those other projects that we took into account and their traffic as well to establish what our base traffic volumes are. The other aspect that we looked at was how much traffic that this site will generate. First thing we looked at was what's, what's comparing, let's compare what it would generate using the same trip generation rates. Trip generation rates are, are from the ITE, which is the acronym for Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's the Bible traffic engineers use to determine future projects and how much traffic they generate. But the 186,000 square foot office would generate in the order of 200 trips per hour. Mostly employee traffic and obviously mostly car traffic. But the proposed 113 warehouse, square foot, 113,000 square foot warehouse would generate in the order of about 40 trips per hour. So about one, about one-fifth, about 20% of, of what in a, the former use, the office use would generate on this site. Albeit, we will have some heavy vehicles, trucks, tractor-trailers that will go in, in and out of this site. And again, based on the ITE information that we have, it'll be about five trips in the morning peak hour, six trips in the evening peak hour. So out of the 40 that will go in and out in the morning and in the morning and the afternoon, about five to six of them will be trucks, such as tractor-trailers. Having, we assume tractor-trailers in our analysis and they most likely would be for this type of land use. So we took that traffic and we superimposed it at the surrounding intersections. Campus Drive and Drive and Way is our main access point to the site. Hilton Court is, is an extension from that. That's the key intersection that our site would utilize to get in, out of the site. That currently operates at level service E or better? There's a, there's a table in our report that shows the different approaches to that intersection and, and the levels of service. And I'm sure the board has heard from traffic engineers talk about levels of service. We model the intersection by putting in the traffic timing, the cycle timing, the volumes, how many vehicles are turning left through, right? And then we analyze that to get, to calculate the average delay that each driver takes in actually each lane group. So if there's a left turn lane, we calculate that delay as well as the through movements, as well as the right turn movements. As in grade school, A is always the best situation and E is the worst, I'm sorry, F is the worst situation. We have an A through E at this intersection. It currently operates at A through E. And when we superimpose our additional traffic on top of that, it doesn't degrade the, the levels of service. It stays within, let's say, each, each lane group, each approach stays with the same level of service, there's no degradation. We increase it in the order of about two seconds for some of the approaches, but that's the limit of our impact. We didn't analyze it as a, as an office, but if we had 200 trips per hour in and out of that intersection, it certainly would degrade it or increase the delays more than what the 40 trips do. So the point being is that we are operating at what would be considered acceptable levels of service, A through E. And the key there is that they stay at those same levels of service. And had it operated, well, we know it had operated, but if it operated again as an office building, would have more impact than, than our, our proposed development. We incorporated, as I said, in the analysis, incorporated heavy truck traffic as well. So that, that was part of the analysis and still came up with minimal. So that was part of the analysis and still came up with minimal impact at that intersection. We also analyzed the intersection of the restaurant driveways, the new restaurants that are coming, and the same effect as well. We expect that the vast majority of our traffic will come to and from Route 10 through the Drive and Lane interchange, full interchange at that location. Our truck traffic will be oriented to 287, to and from 287. That brings you to Route 80, 287 South, North Amboy area, Brunswick area. So that is going to be the main arterial that I believe that a vast majority of traffic, the truck traffic, will utilize this site. So in terms of affecting or having an impact on township roadways, would be absolutely minimal, if not negligible, zero. Site plan, this point, as Franz had mentioned, talking about the site, I believe operates safely and efficiently. Mr. Meth made a very good point about the backing up of trucks. It's always preferable, I'll use that word, that term, to back up a truck in a clockwise direction because the driver can see the corner of his rear truck, rear of his truck, as he backs up in that direction through his mirror. If he's turned the other way, he really has a blind spot and he can't see the back of that truck, can't see where that truck is actually headed. Now, can truckers do it in a safe manner? These are professionals. They back up in all directions in their daily activities and driving a truck. So I, you always use the word preferable to do it in that clockwise direction, and we try to design each and every site, but I've never had a situation where the direction of that backing up of the truck orients how the site is developed. So I understand that preferable direction should be a clockwise direction, but typically you do have a dock manager, you have someone, you have the workers that are out there, you're going to have someone who's going to be watching what's going on. Their employees, their, people work in a warehouse, they're accustomed to be around trucks as well. So slow speeds, otherwise good site visibility at these locations. You know, we are cognizant of the situation, but we don't think it's going to be a unsafe condition and will operate adequately. Parking spaces, more than sufficient. While Franz had, Mr. Locky had pointed out how the emergency vehicles would approach the site, we took a look at it with truck templates as well. But particularly, we looked at the intersection of Campus and Drive and make sure that they, that that maneuver can get to and from the site as well, from Drive and Lane all the way to Hilton Court. So we analyzed that path and found sufficiency of the roadway to accommodate the WB67s. WB67s are the extended cabs with the sleepers in the, in the back of the driver's seat and then the 53-foot trailer. They're the largest vehicles that are allowed on the Jersey, New Jersey roads and most of the whole eastern seaboard coast, part of the country. So we did utilize the absolute largest vehicle, found that to be adequate to circulate and approach the site and leave the site as well. So based on that, we feel that the site plan is designed properly and again, it's safe in addition to that.
Thank you, Joe. I have no further questions for Mr. Stiger.
Questions from members of the board? Mr. Counselor?
I just have a concern that these truckers, if they want to go east or west on Route 80, it's going to be a lot easier for them to go up to 202, make a right turn and get onto, instead of going down on Route 10.
Littleton Road?
Littleton Road, make the right turn to get to 80 East and West. And trucks that size, we don't have. Littleton Road has the church, the schools, school traffic, residential area, it's all residential. And I'm concerned about trucks going in that direction, which is going to be a lot shorter path for them than going down to 287 on Route 10. Is there any way we can direct or force the traffic to go on, onto Route 10 and 287?
Well, I think you'd have to pass an ordinance, your township would have to pass an ordinance of some sort to, no trucks making a right-hand turn or left-hand turn.
Left-hand turn?
Short of that, would you, would you be fine with the operations of this site directing that trucks coming to or from the site will use Route 10 and not use Littleton Road?
That's what we can control, you know, make that, make that a, an operational regulation of, for the site.
Which is consistent with what the multifamily developments that were approved from McCallad along Campus Drive similarly agree to that type of a condition?
Yes. Yep, so we can, we can do that. We can control our site for sure. And if it becomes problematic, the township has that power to pass an ordinance of restricting truck traffic or turning movements as well.
I like your alternative better if you can enforce it.
Yeah, we're not going to let it get to that.
Okay.
Won't happen.
All right, other members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time?
Just one more follow-up on the move, the actual truck physical movements coming out of Hilton Court on campus and then again, campus and Drive. In your review, any issues with the wheel tracking and any existing curbs, will, will the trucks be able to make that maneuver on both streets?
Yes, we analyzed it using auto-turn program, as you're well, sure you're well aware of Anthony, and analyzed it with that WB67. It stayed within the proper lanes, didn't cross yellow, double-yellow lines or hop over curbs. It stayed within the appropriate turning path.
Just, Gordon, one question. See, I think, I don't know if you said it, but you used 2018 volumes, correct? I think you did say it. Did you look at anything like streetlight data or anything to see what current traffic levels are at?
You know, my experience is that currently, traffic volumes are lower than they were back in 2018 because of just the nature of, we're still in this COVID pandemic, people are, are working out of their homes a lot more than they did two, two and a half years ago.
I concur with you with regard to this campus.
So we didn't, we didn't, for that fact. And the other, the other aspect is that we have a proposed use that generates less traffic than, than the former use, and we are permitted use. So off-site impacts, although we looked at them, you know, I think we went far enough with what I think our analysis can show.
Extending that one point about the lower than existing. There was earlier testimony by Mr. Flack that the, the use here could go in anything that's allowed in the zone. So it may not necessarily be warehouse, it could be light manufacturing. I'm not sure what the zoning allows for. But is that, are you still comfortable that that would be less trips than, than the office use?
Absolutely, yes. It'll be, it'll be higher than the 40 of a warehouse, probably in the order from my experience of 113, probably in the order of about 60 or 65 trips. So far less than the 200 that, that an office development of the existing, existing building would be.
Okay, thank you.
Other members? No? All right, have you actually examined Hilton Court and have you concluded that it would function with some significant truck traffic going down it when you've got the, effectively the, almost the residential feel of the hotel across the way?
Yes, I've eaten in Ruth, Chris Ruth's restaurant, but I've been on, on that site and, and drove around and worked on that property, I'd say, many times. Is it going to change the, the character? Well, it's, I would agree with you that a hotel is a quasi-residential, but is it really a residential?
No. It's a mixed use.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we're talking at most five to six trucks an hour, that's one every 10 minutes, 12 to 10 minutes. So it's not going to be a heavy volume that would, I think, would detract from the, from the positive nature of the surrounding property.
Okay, I just, I just, that road doesn't strike me as something that truck traffic would be, I can't say appropriate on, but it just doesn't seem to be a road that I would have expected to find truck traffic on, especially the possibility that it might end up being a 24-hour operation based on the, whoever the tenant, future tenant is. And I just wonder if you had any comments that...
From a traffic engineering, the roadway can easily handle it from, from purposes of, let's say, impacts, whether it's visual or noise. I think Mr. McDonough would be able to handle that better, looking at what the negative criteria might be.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question to that.
Sure.
Are you familiar of any signage along Hilton Court that prohibits stopping or standing in the event that the loading docks are full and you have those trucks piling up onto Hilton Court?
I don't know. I don't know if there are, but again, that's something that the township can control as well if it becomes a problematic.
In your opinion, is there any place on-site where trucks could queue or?
I think we have a couple of docks, not loading docks, but storage.
In case they're full.
He's here, or he's here, right?
So you can use the...
We do have, yeah, trailer storage. I mean, tractor-trailer could, although it's for purposes of storing dropped trailer, you could easily fit a tractor-trailer with a cab in there also. So we do have those locations, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor? Well, one last thing. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness of this testimony? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Counselor?
Thank you, Joe. Last but not least, needs no introduction, John McDonough. John has, huh, I think every big project I've ever done in Parsippany, John has planned it. So when it came to this project, even though this is a permitted use, I wanted John to participate because I wanted, this is an introduction of a, of a new use onto the campus. So I wanted to have a local planner give his insight into planning issues. So here we go, John McDonough, you swear your hand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so up you go?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, John McDonough, M.C., capital D.O.N., O.U.G.H.
Now, Mr. McDonough has appeared for this board every month in the past many years. If the board could accept his qualifications, that would be great.
I don't know who he is. This is supposed to be in Hell's Night, huh?
I know, it's a parade.
Any questions on the qualifications of Mr. McDonough?
No.
Anybody still angry from that? No.
Now, John, you were one of the first professionals brought onto the team.
Yes.
So, and you've been working hand-in-hand with Franz and Joe and his partner and the architects from day one, correct?
We have.
Okay. So since you, you, I'm going to let you talk about the campus, the introduction of this new use onto the campus and all the planning rationales. So take it away.
I think the main reason Steve Romey here is because my pictures are from June. It was zero degrees this weekend. These pictures will make us remember that. It actually is warm.
Okay, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your permission now.
A7.
Yes, A7.
Okay, this is John McDonough's plan.
And for the record, we entered a planning report. I don't know, Steve, did this get entered as an exhibit?
Yep. Yeah, I have it right here.
Because these are the same photos that are in the planning report. The only thing, I'm going to get kicked out of here because it says I'm in a tetraprop Hamilton. You just, I know I'm not in Hamilton.
Which Hamilton?
The Charles.
There's two.
Mercer.
It's okay.
Sorry about that, you're on Route 33.
Mercer.
Mercer, exactly. The, the reports, right. Okay, so the purpose of this exhibit, A2?
This is A7.
A7 for the record is to show that not only does this particular land use in this project marry up very well with the zone in terms of fully conforming with all the requirements of the SED-10 Zone District, from a use standpoint, you heard about the permitted use, which does actually allow for a wide variety of, of land uses in this economic development district, but also 100% conforming with respect to the bulk controls, the building volume, the mass, the parking, the setbacks, the coverage, all fully conforming with your ordinance. So this is spot-on with what the SED-10 Zone wants to be. This is one of those economic development zones that actually do allow for industrial and warehousing type use, which is right on point with where our world has gone as we've moved from a world that you went out to, to a world that now comes to you. And this land use only continues to gain currency every single day. If, if you go by our Office of Emergency Management Services, Homeland Security, Center for Disease Controls, this is what's called critical infrastructure in terms of getting medicines and food and products out to people, and that's exactly what the warehouse land use does. We know that when there was the state home orders, just like our healthcare workers had to go out, so did our warehouse workers and our truck drivers as well. So there's a nexus in terms of essential there as well. The key point of these visuals here, I won't go through them one by one, is to show a great nexus with Route 10 and less than a mile away from Exit 39 off of Interstate 287. So this is going to be able to take you right onto and off of the highway without having to go through the residential neighborhoods here in town. So we think this is a, a great location. Kudos to the planning board because this is the spot in the campus where this type of land use is allowed, again, because of its great nexus with that regional highway network. Also importantly here is we do have a site that has excellent carrying capacity. It's over 10 acres, so it can accommodate the mass and scale of what the applicant is proposing. And then finally, the fact that we do have a vacant office building here, these new buildings that are coming online, these warehouse buildings, we call them Class A, they will retain the look of an office use, so I think they'll be very complementary with the campus as well. Class A buildings attract Class A tenants, and that's what this campus wants to have here, are, are the Class A tenants. So again, kudos to good planning and kudos to an applicant here who is stacking up 100% with what those planning goals are. I won't flip through the individual photos, but essentially, they are drone photos to show the beautiful landscape here, the beautiful campus, and how this is going to nestle within that campus and not needing any, any relief whatsoever. And then, of course, the photos show the turnaround on Route 10 and easy on, easy off, getting back to the highway system. So with that, I will just say this is a really good application from a planning standpoint. I don't want to overtalk it here. I think it's a relatively light lift. The applicant has done a good job in advancing the purposes of zoning and the promotion of the general welfare, and no substantially negative impacts associated with, with this particular land use. The master plan is right on point with this and recognizes the struggling office market and the need to be flexible and transformative in terms of good planning. With that, I would say the statutory criteria for a site plan approval are certainly met here and approval is warranted.
Thank you.
Any members of the board have questions of the planner? Mr. Napolotano?
Just out of curiosity, do you have a way to, to, to superimpose the actual artist rendition into your pictures? Is there a way to do that? I know you don't have it tonight, but is there a way to do that?
I'm sure architects can use SketchUp as a tool to drop it into a 3D.
Yeah, that'd be really, really helpful too for everyone to see what it really looks like when it's all finished. Thank you for these wonderful pictures.
Okay. Any members of the board at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Weiser, do you have any?
I do not. It's a fully conforming application, so there's no variances, so there's no justifications for variances. So it's a by-rate application.
Okay. Any comments from our professionals or questions? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have any questions from any members of the board, or the public, I should say? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you very much. If I could just sum up briefly, again, it is nice seeing you all in person. The last couple of applications I had, we're looking at my computer screen and, and I also have to say, it's really nice to come in here with a not apartment building, coming in with a, with a commercial industrial use. One thing about this... One thing about this, it's kind of sad because of the, the existing building at Two Hilton is a really pretty building. It's, it's Class A, which, but unfortunately, as, as the town knows, it's not for want of trying to get a new tenant in there, it's just that, that market is gone. So this is the, this district in Parsippany is intended to generate economic activity, and it's, it was kind of sad to see a lot of the buildings not generating economic activity. And yes, apartments are coming in elsewhere on the campus, but to see a commercial use remain on Two Hilton, I'm happy about that. And working with Onyx, again, they brought up most of MacCalla's assets on the campus, and to see them keeping the commercial, you know, introducing industrial, bringing their investment in to maintain the vibrancy of the campus is, you know, only good things in my book. And working with them, I guess, it's been close to a year now. I mean, it takes a while to get from there to sitting right here, and it's been a terrific team. They care, I mean, when we said, you know, you have to follow the ordinance, follow the plan, they did. They didn't come and ask for an 80-foot building, they didn't come and ask for, you know, sometimes a developer will just try to get as much as he can get away with. They didn't, they didn't. They came in and, a 10-acre site, what fits, what's safe, what works. And believe me, they'll find tenants for this building. Tenant, hopefully, one. But the demand is there. They're, they're doing a huge project down the street where Navartis is, they're turning that, they're doing industrial redevelopment there, it's huge. So this is coming. Again, I'm, although I did some apartment buildings, I'm, again, I'm happy to come in here with a commercial use. And we do hope the, the board appreciates, you know, you know, a year's worth of effort came in and it was summarized in two and a half hours, and we do appreciate the board's time. We appreciate all the review memos, we've been working with the board, former professionals, current professionals, we're going to comply with everything because that's, that's who this applicant is. They're, they're a great client, a good corporation to work with. And we do hope that you'll like the product because this is just one of the many things that they have planned, and I hope it's a good introduction for Onyx to Parsippany, and hope this is just one of many great projects that are going to bring to the town.
Okay, so that's your case. Are there any members of the public who wish to come forward and speak either in opposition or in favor of this at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I guess we move to, to close the evidentiary portion of this case at this time. Are there any members of the board that would like to make comments on this case at this time before we go to asking for a resolution? All right, hearing and seeing none. Is there somebody who would like to move a resolution on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this project with whatever conditions our attorney has scribbled down through the meeting.
Mr. Attorney, would you please read back to the board what, what conditions you picked up in our discussions?
Of course, Mr. Chairman. The applicant requires the DEP permit LOI. The condition set forth in the Highland Council report, add a sidewalk to the Hilton Court roadway, add one ADA space, add the refuse container to the exterior of the building. Was it any specifics with that refuse location or to be determined?
To be determined.
Okay. So they, they agree to work with our professionals on deciding where these things will be?
Right. Create a wayfinding sign plan. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
The only other thing that I recall is just to resubmit all the plans correcting any discrepancies between the materials.
Oh, and the, Mr. Di Piero's comment about the description on this operator's turning, keeping their right, right-hand, right turn out of the site.
Encouragement to use the Route 10 corridor and not Littleton Road.
Mr. McDonough, my, my engineer, correct me, it's not an LOI, it's not a letter of interpretation, they're, they're going to be obtaining as a flood hazard area verification and individual permit.
Thank you, it's referenced as LOI in the report, I apologize for that.
Thank you.
It's a flood hazard verification. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, use Route 10 as corridor. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments on this resolution?
Are you also adding the condition to have one ADA parking as, with the EV station in there?
Add one ADA parking space.
With EV access?
It was, it was kind of twofold. Add one ADA parking space and add an EV charging station to the ADA space.
Thank you.
If not.
No, I, I, reading the new ordinance that, that I have yet even to use to, to, for any one applicant that's coming, I don't think there's any section in there that talks about how to regulate that, that I don't think has been addressed yet, we're still waiting to hear from that. So that would be, I wouldn't know yet how, what to enforce of what that space would need to be. So far, that has not been in any of the regulations because there's a particular spot where they're encouraging you to put those, they're not in the front where the entrance is, where you're normally ADA. So I, I think we're not at that step yet, my understanding is.
So you promised to work with our professionals in the zoning.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't make it mandatory because you'd have to come back if you couldn't meet it.
We'll, we'll use best efforts to provide EV opportunities for ADA-accessible spaces. Now, we have our bank of EV spaces which are not, ADA gets the pick of the litter, they get the best spots, but we'll do our best to provide at least one piece of it, so ADA people are not denied.
Right. I don't want it to be a condition that the zoning officer have to force you to do something that's not feasible and then we have to come back to remove it. Do you know what I mean? I don't want to have to make it a mandatory condition, because I don't know that way.
So we're, we're going to ask that they work with the zoning officer and anybody else and, and the engineer perhaps, or just to determine if it's, if it's even feasible to create an ADA space that has access to an EV charger?
We can also leave it so minor site modifications are dealt with professional staff as opposed to requiring the board approval.
Right. I mean, it's, it's easy to put these things in when you're building the site, it's harder to do it later, so.
Yes.
And again, the spirit of equal accessibility for everyone, right?
Absolutely.
Those are the conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Those are the conditions, though I hear, I'm assuming, Mr. Mett, that all of those conditions were, were inherent in your, your motion?
Yeah, except the EV one. No, I'm kidding. Yes, they are.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
So you win. All right, Nora, would you please call the roll?
Berberio.
Yes.
DeRiche.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Mett.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Vili.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. Thank you so much. We're delivering some good product to Parsippany. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nora, are there any other items that we need to deal with tonight?
No other items.
I'm supposed to remind the new members who haven't gone for education, that they're going to have to go to education. At some point in time, Nora has the details.
Yep.
So for those of you, Gordon, going to a class on this, I think, would be a little interesting. Who's teaching whom?
It's funny, I've actually taught that class, like I teach the engineer that class for 15 years.
Well, I suspect your past classes might qualify, but I don't know, they won't.
No, they won't. I gotta go, I gotta sit here, I gotta take the test.
You gotta take the test. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Did we have a motion to adjourn?
I, I hear a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sit down.